Good evening, everyone. I want to call the East Green Bush Central School of Education Meeting for March 13th to order. Board members present, all board members are present except for Ms. Taylor and Mr. Mann is not available. We have a pretty big agenda. We're going to be open some budget workshop, capital project information. But before we start, I do want to just have mode of silence for Casey Finkowski, who passed away in a helicopter crash recently. So if you could just give us a moment. Thank you, everyone. So with that, let's please rise and join the pleasantries. Thank you, everyone. So we have our minutes from the February 28th meeting. Mr. Mann was not there, Emily was not there. We still have the forum, right, Janie? All right. For the first one, the public hearing minutes, any corrections or comments on the minutes? C9 motion to approve those. Michelle, second, Jesse, all those in favor? Next, we have the minutes for the regular meeting for February 28th. Should have said those abstaining, I'm sorry, Emily. Any corrections, comments on the minutes? Need a motion to approve those. John, second, Jesse, all those in favor? Those abstaining, one approved. Now move to our board forum. I'll start at my left with Cheryl.
Just congratulations to our girls bowling team. I know they just won the state championship, so congratulations.
Jesse. Emily.
I did go to the play recently at Columbia High School, and I want to say it was a great production and I was very happy to go.
Next.
And we have one Friday.
Yes, we have the golf musical, which is Peter Pan Jr., Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I believe.
And I did, I did hear, I'll say, I will say, I did hear that people wish there were more, more shows.
Just saying, right? Moving to the public forum, residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School of Education. They address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. There is the board do not directly respond to system concerns in the public forum. If response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the NJO in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the business forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may consider defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and would be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board this time? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mark and I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank Mr. Maher, his staff, and the Belltop PTO for hosting a recent driver appreciation breakfast. The staff of Belltop created a delicious and elaborate breakfast for the staff, and it was a mystery themed event. Everybody who attended, they were simply overjoyed, they were kind of overwhelmed, and very, very appreciative. The Belltop PTO sponsored the event, which included a gift bag, and I thought you might want to see one of the items that everyone received.
Very nice.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. You good, Dr. Queen? So the next item on our agenda, is there any more for the public? Oh, sorry, Allison.
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin my prepared remarks, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to our wonderful Janay teacher, Julie Hamel, who was recognized recently as one of our WNYT top teachers, so adding to our list. Very exciting. I'm Allison Savoka, President of the East Green Bush Teachers Association, and good evening to all respected members of the Board of Education and Central Administration. Last week, our membership voted to ratify the memorandum of agreement the board will see during regular business this evening, solidifying the successor agreement reached between the EGTAs and the district. There were bumps along the road, but ultimately, I feel confident that this is the fair and reasonable agreement we set out to reach just over a year ago when we first began the collective bargaining process. On behalf of the East Green Bush Teachers Association, I want to thank the district's administration team, and I want to thank the Board of Education for the collaboration that was required to reach the settlement. The board has heard me speak on numerous occasions about the value of our first-class educators and how essential it is to be the gold standard for educating others about that value. The EGTAs remains committed to this goal, and we will continue to provide the excellence our community has come to expect from our professionals. I've also shared that our leadership team is and will continue to be productive participants in good, meaningful labor relations with the district. It is an honor to represent this organization, is also an honor to advocate for this profession we hold in such high esteem. We will continue to make this school district proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Anyone else? No? Okay. Moving on to the next item is the reports and presentations of the superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Bino, thank you very much. Members of the community that are here, members of the community that are participating via the live stream, I appreciate your attendance at this particular board meeting, at all board meetings. We have some special presentations this evening, and the first one is very, very impressive. About two months ago, I think, maybe more, one of our high school seniors, Cole Mellon, who's here with us this evening, reached out to me with an idea for a program that the students would like to start at Columbia High School. It's not only a academic project, but it's a very impressive project that will enhance not only the quality of some of the services that the students will be receiving at the school, but the quality of the relationships between students. So I'm not going to give you the details because that'll be up to the presentation team, but they are here, they're an impressive group, and this is something we would like the board to consider and support. So I'll turn it over to our group of students, which is Cole Mellon, Carter Nolan, Nolan Romanowski, and I don't know if, if, Andrew is here, but you might be missing one.
Yeah, we're missing one, so.
Okay, very good. I'll turn it over to you, gentlemen. Any of those microphones will work for you.
Okay, so the bill we're presenting today is the Columbia Cafe. Okay, so before we get into the specifics of our bill, we'd like to give a brief overview of what we're trying to pursue.
Does the clicker work?
If we could switch it to the tab that it's on.
Can we put the live presentation on?
So first, we're going to address what our bill would do. So first, this bill will offer a completely renovated snack shack with new appliances and unique new food and beverage options. This will satisfy the needs and preferences of students, staff, and faculty around the school. This bill will also offer special education students with the opportunity to complete work hours required for graduation while simultaneously providing them with job preparation, which is imperative for life beyond Columbia. And this proposal will also offer students the opportunity to complete community service hours. Additionally, this will give students the ability to interact with students they may have never interacted with before. So obviously, this bill will initially be implemented within Columbia. With that being said, after speaking to Mr. Mann, his hope is that this policy will expand to other locations throughout the capital region. So while this is being introduced within Columbia, his eventual goal is that this will expand throughout New York State. So the earliest we anticipate this will come into fruition is second semester. While that may seem a little ambitious considering second semester is now, after speaking to Mr. Simons, he had suggested he'd like to see this in effect as early as possible. Realistically, next year would be a probable time for this to be introduced as well. This will allow time for appliances, supplies, and organization to occur within the snack shack. So ideally, by the 2024, 2025 school year, this bill will be in full effect. And then actually, long term, we hope this bill will eventually be introduced and will continue to influence future generations. So a few problems that we ran into, one being unhappy customers. So after conducting a survey, many respondents had agreed that a renovated snack shack would be within the school's best interest. In an overwhelming majority of respondents, over 75%, had said that they'd be interested in buying seasonal goods. This shows students are seeking a wide variety of food and beverage options that aren't being provided. So this would not only provide more variety in the snack shack, but this would also provide as a more direct line of communication between the students and their preferences and what's being sold. The next problem we're trying to address is the lack of volunteer opportunities. While administration and teachers try their best to offer a sufficient amount of volunteer opportunities, there's no constant, this would serve as a constant option for students to seek community service hours for both PEG and National Honor Society as it be open period one through seven virtually every single day. And then final problem this will combat is the lack of peer interaction. This would provide special education students with the chance to engage with their peers they may not see otherwise and vice versa. This will provide various emotional benefits like compassion, patience, things of that nature. So next is our bill and its alternatives. We will cover most of the bill in our later slides, but first is the alternatives. The main alternative we thought of was pretty simple, just continue with the current operation and its limited variety and outdated appliances. And this would, this would prevent, well, this would mitigate some peer interaction, and it would also mean we'd have to continue transporting the special education students to businesses around East Green Bush to gain their work experience. If we, if we use our bill, this will not only provide the special education students with a centralized working location, but this will also allow students to volunteer their time and also work with the snack shack. So the survey results. We conducted a survey in 57 student respondents, and one of the questions was, would you be interested in a renovated snack shack? And 86% of students were in favor of the renovated snack shack. And similarly, we asked, would you be interested in buying seasonal flavors? And 75% of the student body said they would be interested in buying seasonal flavors. Likewise, 88% of students were in favor or neutral to the idea of special education students working in the snack shack. So I compiled some of the data here into these bar graphs, and it shows some of the most popular snacks that were requested as well as drinks. So brownies, ice cream, popcorn chips were one of the most requested goods, but as I'll get into later in the slides, they cannot all be sold because of the health guidelines that need to be met. Some of the main drinks were soda, energy drinks, coffee, iced tea, things of that such. So the interview, we did conduct with Mr. Simons. Just a brief overview, he is in support of the idea, and he asked us to interview Mrs. Wise and Mrs. Mulligan on the feasibility of the project, and we would have to meet the guidelines that is set forth by USDA. So as we mentioned earlier, the bill would likely go into effect during the 2024, 25 school year, and he thinks it's financially and politically feasible. So one of the potential issues is the health guidelines that need to be met, and we emailed to Mrs. Wise, who is the Director of Food Services, and all food and the drinks must meet USDA guidelines, and she sent us these links, and every product needs to meet the guidelines on the Smart Snack Product Calculator, which I'll get into in the next slide. So one of the examples of the Smart Snack Product Calculator. So I did espresso, and you have to choose what kind of product it is, where it is being sold, and then what is the main ingredient in the beverage? What is the chloric density of it, and then whether or not the snack is approved? Similarly, with the baked lay's chips, what kind of product it is? What are the main ingredients, the nutrition facts, and then whether or not the product is compliant?
So some more potential issues, as we were going over them, where it came up as sensory issues, and really, a sensory issue is just when you have an overload of your senses and you get overstimulated. And this would come into more effect with special needs students. Many of the factors that could produce this would be the gloves, the itchiness of the latex, or the hairnet. But in order to address this, we are planning on just addressing all the student volunteers ahead of time and just saying like, hey, this might happen, and just giving ways that they could prevent this and take care of them. And then how would we know that there would be enough volunteers? Is, we are planning on sending out an email with a schedule, probably a Google spreadsheet, and where you could just sign up for your desired period, and this would be sent out bi-monthly, so you could plan out months in advance. And then reminders will be sent out every other week just to make sure that we will always have enough volunteers volunteering. However, there is limited space in the snack shack, so we are probably planning on a two-to-two student ratio of two students and two special education students. And here are a few pictures of what is the current snack shack, and obviously, you can see that there is limited space, but also, the space is not being taken advantage fully. We have options underneath the countertops. We are planning on implementing like bins or shelving units just to try to maximize the space that we can.
So the financials. So I priced out all the appliances to the snack shack if it were to be completely redone. Now, not all of these appliances need to be refurbished, but this was, this would be about $18,000 if every appliance was to be replaced. Similarly, I priced out the recurring costs using a wholesale club such as Costco, which is where our supplier is, and this would come out to be about $1,800, but would depend on the supply and demand of the snack shack. So total cost, like I said, the appliances with $19,950, and the recurring cost was $1,847, coming to a total of $21,597. Now, this is only a small portion of the district budget, which is $108 million, so our investment would only be about 0.02% of the district budget.
From our supporters, we, as mentioned before, we interviewed Mr. Simons, and we also talked to other Board of Education members, and everyone has been in agreeance, is saying that this is very feasible financially and would be great for the community. So our plan is to get everyone on board.
So some of the real-world examples was the Rebel Roasters of Racine High School and the Little E Coffee Cafe. I think you have a video. Yes, thank you.
Little E is a coffee cafe located in the beautifully renovated Amper Sam building at 140 Fourth Avenue Southwest, downtown Calgary. We are brewing greatness by teaching life skills and giving opportunities to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Little E is striving to break down barriers and create a culture of awareness and acceptance in our local community and our country. Because what makes us different makes us great. Come visit us between Monday to Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and you may even catch a dance party.
So that was in Alberta, Canada, and it's a very similar idea to what we are going to actually implement, and it has volunteers like us working alongside special needs students. So in conclusion, our bill is to revamp the current snack shack with new appliances and new options. So it's a substitution for work hours for special education students, and it was also offered community service hours to all volunteers. And the financials, cost of appliances, $19,750. Our current cost is about $1,847, and the total cost will be about $21,597. So our supporters, some of the, some examples are Mr. Mann, who doesn't seem to be here tonight, but Mr. Simons, Lisa Johns, which is one of the special education teachers at Columbia. Alongside her is Audrey Tobacco, who is a social worker, Mr. Harkin, and Questar speech therapist Heather Campbell. Some of our references. Any questions from the board?
I love it. My only question is, did you assess how much money we'll make from it? So we have $21,000 of cost, what's our offset?
So currently, the snack shack's making about $6,000 in profits, and it would be a kind of trial and error, but we would project to see higher profits in the current snack shack.
Great.
I think it's admirable, like, you know, I really appreciate the perspective of, of working with, you know, special needs children. I was wondering like the personal connection, like what drives you to want to connect with students with intellectual or academic disabilities?
Yes, I mean, like we said earlier, there's not a lot of peer interaction among especially special needs students and like other students of the school. So they're kind of kept sheltered in a room all day, which I felt like it would be great to have more peer interaction so they can learn to, learn real-world activities and also work alongside their peers. And I mean, they're not only working along peers in the snack shack, they're also serving their peers, so they can also have that interaction as well.
No, like, thank you. So like, you know, all right.
Good.
And I want to piggyback off that, too. It's not also just about the special education students interacting with us, it's about the general population interacting with them, and just giving them a whole new perspective that a lot of them don't see in their day-to-day lives. Just being able to interact with a different type of people is just a crucial life skill. I feel like everyone needs one.
I agree on it. So like, and the reason why I ask is because, you know, I have a special needs child myself, and, you know, a lot of the times, you know, I just like the idea, you know, at the end of the day, the world is filled with different people everywhere that we go, right? And a lot of the times, I like just to approach, you know, when I think about it, we share the world together, right? Like, you know, like the only way I'm going to be able to help anyone is to bring myself and they bring theirself and we together, you know? But, and it's, and it's just the perspective that, you know, just, just, you know, really, we're sharing, you know, our work experiences and not so much bringing something, you know? It's really just to share, to develop our own understanding and things like that, you know? And being able to connect with who we are and then who others are.
Yes. I suggest you also.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add on that. I run track, and I got the opportunity to meet a special needs student who also ran track last year, and despite his like neurological disability, he was really cool and like, he's a cool kid. So I think it's great to meet them and realize there's nothing that different about them.
And I think it's also valuable to note that not all students are almost as inclusive as us. So I think just giving the opportunity to show them that they can work alongside with us is just crucial that really all students think so.
I really am impressed by all the work you guys did with the research, the interviews, and just the idea is fantastic. When I taught at Kingston, they did something similar to this, like on a quarterly basis, and they called it Bagel Cafe, but it was all run by the special needs students. They delivered everything. It was very successful, so I completely support this. Did a great job.
Yeah, I thought this was a really well-done presentation. I think for, knowing you guys are in high school, I, you know, my day job, right, is at a New York State Office of Children and Family Services, and I feel like the caliber of this presentation is really well-done. So I applaud you for that, and I applaud you for even thinking of this and being inclusive. And I think you hit the nail on the head that, you know, a lot of people aren't, and the more we can show that this is how we should be and, you know, spread kindness, it matters. So thank you.
So what are the next steps in terms of what you need from the district? What do you need from us?
We would also meet with Mrs. Mulligan, Mrs. Wise again. Just as, Mrs. Wise also sent me a sheet of what goods that we would think the students would want. We checked off some of the new goods that were projected to be sold, and we'd have to meet with Mrs. Mulligan about the finances after the new snacks happen implemented. Over the 20, over the summer, going into the 25 school year, we would also need to make those renovations. So we'd probably need to meet with the architect at some point, just to make sure.
Mr. Mark Casey, do you want to stand up?
They might be our priority now. You know, I would just want to make sure that the snacks are things that kids like, because I've heard, no offense, but they are not well-loved foods right now. You know, everybody's like, they're too healthy. And I know there's a border, I know there's a border line. I'm just saying, just keep that, and I'm sure you guys know that, just keep that in mind as much as we can.
Absolutely. And we spoke with Mrs. Wise, or Mrs. Mulligan. So anything that is not being sold at a high rate that we would just get rid of, and maybe try something new.
And I think it's also going to help that we are also going to have students working in the snack shack, too. So if any, there's like a customer like, hey, I'm like this, then we have to direct input.
So I just questioned, so what are your, what are your funds going to support? You had said you, it's a pretty good chunk of change that you.
The funds do go back to the district fund currently, and.
Supporting activities like other things that we can do in the district or projects or clubs or things like that?
They currently, they do go back to the district currently.
School Lunch Fund.
Certainly, we could track it and see what, you know, revenues are being generated from it and consider some ideas to expand on your program, maybe build in some other inclusive opportunities for kids to connect. Certainly be a great, great idea, so.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the presentation. I will be reporting to Mr. Mann as he'd be very proud of you. As the Board of Education, the staff, we're all very proud of the initiatives, and I want to thank everybody involved in this, the teachers, for fostering this environment because from where we're, we're trying to create this and throughout the district, that everyone has a place and everyone feels welcome. So I think it's a great initiative. You showed good leadership, and please continue that, not only here, but carry this for your life and always pay it forward. This was a very, very nice presentation. Like Emily said, it's, it's, we see a lot of stuff, and you did well today. So to you and everyone who helped facilitate your effort, and I will report that to Mr. Mann for a small fee.
Yeah, I have to say, I, it's, this is amazing. So, you know, when you go to the board meetings, a lot of times, it's a little, you know, stuffy. You guys have made me smile, and this is exactly why all of us in this room come together, is to be inspired by people like you. So thank you for that, and I really truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, a lot of the students in those, in the British regional government have their classes inspired by our teachers, obviously, and their guidance is very important, too. And I appreciate their advised, their advisory role that they play in this, and, and all the students who participated and brought ideas forward. And this looks like a great idea. We're very supportive here as a board, so I think you'll see it happen pretty quick.
Great job, guys.
So you guys had mentioned the budget. It's only a small point, 0000, whatever it was. Now we're going to start talking about the budget.
Very good. Just want to make sure. Good evening, everyone. I think the best advocates for the school district budget are the students themselves. They reflect the high quality of the education that we offer here in East Green Bush. They reflect the support that they get from the teachers, as Mr. Bino said. And so as we talk about the revenues and expenditure information that we shared tonight, I think it's important to, as we proceed with the budget, to always keep in mind that the students are at the center of our decision-making. We try to balance the support that we continue to provide our students with excellent programs in a community that has strong support for public education and high expectations that go along with that. And so the budget presentation tonight is really the first formal budget presentation that we're making to our Board of Education. The Board of Education has until April 23rd, in accordance with New York State regulations, to adopt a final budget. So this is in some ways a middle point. The starting point came in the middle of January when Governor Hochul presented her executive budget. In order to explain the context of where we're at with our school district budget, I need to go back to January and maybe really go back three years because we've talked a lot about state aid in our public schools, and particularly in East Green Bush. There were years when state aid was being reduced significantly. We had something called the gap elimination adjustment, where aid that the school district was entitled to under formulas that were approved by the legislature and the governor in New York State was not flowing to the school district. There were large forums to talk about the loss of aid. For years, school districts advocated for restoration of school aid through something called the Foundation Aid Formula. In fact, school districts brought lawsuits against the state of New York because schools were not being provided with the amount of money they needed to provide a basic sound education. Good news came three years ago when Governor Hochul and the legislature made a commitment to fund what's called the Foundation Aid Formula, which is designed to look at every district. Which is designed to look at every district in New York State and our seven hundred school districts in New York State. Determine what does that district need to provide a basic sound education? That formula is based on various factors, including student enrollment. The demographics of the student population, schools, for example, that have more children on free and, free and reduced lunch. More students with disabilities, more students who receive E N L services. Tend to receive more state aid than other districts. Districts are categorized as being high needs districts versus low wealth districts versus high wealth districts and average districts. East Green Bush is an average district. We're not a wealthy district. We're not a high needs district. We're right in the middle. And in some ways, over the course of the years, the districts that are in the middle have lost out on the final state budget. We're hoping that that will not happen this year. In January, after the governor and the legislator, legislators committed to following that Foundation Aid Formula. They made two changes within the formula and kinda went backwards on their commitment. First thing that they did was they took the, uh, Consumer Price Index or the measure of inflation. That is used to determine how much school districts are going to get per student. And they averaged it over ten years, dropping the highest year of inflation and dropping the lowest. Kinda like for the students, dropping the highest grade and the lowest grade. So the money that we're getting doesn't reflect the actual. C P I or inflation rate that has been occurring on a monthly basis. Costs are going up for everybody, including school districts. The second thing that they did was they took something called Hold Harmless. Which applied to a category of school districts that were already receiving the amount of money that they were entitled to under the Foundation Aid Formula. And they eliminated that. So what they really did was they cut the Foundation Aid that was in, districts were entitled to, and they went backwards. Thankfully, as we've been advocating with the legislature, we are getting closer to being able to say that we're going to get. Some level of restoration of school aid. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about that this evening. But we're in a district that is an average wealth district. We rely both on local property taxes to fund the excellent programs that we offer the students in the community. But we also need our fair share of state aid that we're entitled to under the aid formulas. So tonight, we're gonna talk about those sources of revenue, the main sources of revenue being state aid and local property taxes. We're gonna give the board a sense of how much revenue we're projecting to receive next year through those various funding sources. We'll talk a little bit about historical information that has impacted our budgets currently and may be impacting our budgets in the future. We're gonna provide a preliminary look at where we're at with our expenses and our revenues for next year. And I say preliminary because we have things that we can do to close the gap between the projected expenses and the projected revenue. And there is a gap of about one point nine million dollars at this point in time, and I'll talk about why that is. Additionally, we're gonna talk about the categories of the school budget that drive the expenses from year to year. Right? Those categories are no different for any school district, whether it's a district of our size or a smaller district. In general, you can see similar trends within expenses within the budget. About eighty percent of a school district's budget, East Green Bush and all the other six hundred and ninety nine districts. Is in the personnel costs and the staff that serve the kids. School districts are a people business. We provide educational services to kids. So about eighty percent of the budget is in the faculty and the excellent staff that we have to provide the educational program for the kids. Next steps, we'll talk about the process moving forward, which will include taking a closer look internally. At some ways that we can reduce expenses, continuing to advocate for restoration of state aid. And talking with our board about what they wanna do regarding the local property tax levy, uh, for next year's budget. So there'll be many conversations from this point on until April twenty third, when the board is scheduled to adopt. The budget for twenty four, twenty five. When we talk about the school district revenues, uh, it's important to know that. More than fifty percent of the revenue that comes into our district is from the local property taxes, about fifty three point four percent. About thirty four percent comes from state aid. We also have reserves and fund balance that represent a portion of that, of the fund balance that we appropriate towards the next year's budget. We appropriate fund balance to ensure that our budget can provide for changes that may occur within a given school year. To offset, in some cases, considerations regarding program cuts or staff cuts. And we also want to be sensitive and balance those considerations with the capacity of the taxpayers to pay local property tax increases. But you can see that it's pretty consistent across the years, and it will be that way because we are an average wealth district. We are not as reliant on state aid as a high needs district. So even though in each year, our budget has gone up incrementally. The proportion of the budget that is funded from these various revenue sources remains about the same. Because of the categorization of our district as an average wealth district with property taxes providing more revenue than state aid. About six percent of our revenue is in what's called pilot agreements. Pilot agreements are payments in lieu of taxes. These are arrangements that are made between the Rensler County Industrial Development Agency and various businesses. That do not pay their hundred percent of their assessment of local property taxes. They pay on a schedule of payments and the intent of that pilot agreement is to incentivize job growth. Business development and job retention within our county. We receive approximately six point, six million dollars worth of, uh, pilot revenues each year. Which represents about five point six percent of the revenue within the budget. Additionally, our board has been very conscientious about property taxes. As we strive to have high quality educational services for our students. We also strive to have affordability to the taxpayers. There is a New York State property tax cap. Some people refer to it as a two percent tax cap. It's not a two percent tax cap. It starts at two percent or inflation, whichever is lower. And then there are various factors that enter into the formula. We presented that formula to the board and the community at our last Board of Education meeting. But you can see here on this graph, the green bar representing the amount, percentage that the New York State says we could raise the tax levy. Is based on that particular tax cap formula in comparison to the actual final budget. And the amount that the board determined to raise the tax levy. So every year since two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and even prior to that, our board has strived to keep. The tax levy increases below the New York State tax cap. And again, this varies for districts, which you can also see in the last three years. After we came through the pandemic, the board and the district made decisions. To help our kids and our taxpayers by keeping the tax levy zero percent in twenty one, twenty two. Zero percent in twenty two, twenty three and a half of one percent last year. So over the last three years, the board has held the line on local property tax increases. That's about a point one seven percent, not one point seven percent. Point one seven percent average annual increase in the tax levy. For next year's budget, our New York State tax cap is point five five percent. So it's very, very low in terms of the, uh, local tax, uh, tax levy. The budget is approved by the local residents within our various communities. Boards of education can exceed the New York State tax cap by a super majority vote. Which includes sixty percent of the public authorizing the board to go over that tax cap. That it's not a determination that our board has made. I'm just citing the New York State, uh, law. And some districts right now are in a position where they are looking at long lists of potential cuts. Or tax levy increases that are, uh, difficult to, um, gain community support for. Hopefully that situation will change. Fifty percent of the school districts in New York State are getting an actual reduction in state aid next year. We're getting an increase, but not the increase that we're entitled to. So as we look at expenditures for next year, our total expenditures are projected at, looking at this year's budget as a hundred and eight point eight million dollar budget. Which was cited by our students, a very low percentage of the Columbia Cafe will cost the district. As a percentage of that budget, we agree. Our budget at this point in time is scheduled to go up to a hundred and twelve point four million dollars. That represents a three point six million dollar increase or a percentage of about three point three percent. Again, this is very preliminary. We're still, we're, we're still working on it. Revenues that we project at this point in time, because the legislature has not added additional aid. The final state budget has not been, uh, arrived at. We have to use the revenues based on the going up to the point five five percent tax cap. The amount of state aid that the governor estimated for our district within her executive budget back in January. And so our revenues for next year are projected at a hundred and four point two million, which is an increase of two point two million dollars or two point two percent. We do have reserves. Our district is a fiscally stable school district. We are rated by the New York State Comptroller as not being in fiscal stress. We have to be careful and cautious about appropriating reserves and fund balance. But this particular budget, uh, is, uh, recommending to appropriate. About five hundred thousand dollars from our reserves and about five point eight million dollars from what's called our appropriated fund balance. We have reserves in such areas as E R S, as well as A V L R, which is for post employee retirement benefit costs. Mrs. Mulligan reviews the level of those reserves. We also have to look forward to make sure that we are projecting expenses in years ahead. To make sure that we don't take money out of our savings account as the bills are going up. And then finally, when you go to that savings account, there's no more money there to cover our recurring expenses. So it's important to be careful about using non recurring revenues, such as fund balance for recurring expenses. And so at this point, we're cautiously approaching our recommendations regarding use of reserves. In total, we have a hundred and ten point five million dollars of revenue and a hundred and twelve point four, uh, estimated expenses. Leaving a gap of one point nine million dollars, which represents about one point seven percent of the total budget. One point nine million dollar budget gap is a significant gap. It's not insurmountable. Right? We, we have seen larger budget gaps in the past. And we're, I believe that over the next few weeks, we will be able to work with our board and our community to close that gap and come out with a strong budget for our students and our taxpayers. We wanna look at various areas of the budget that are more significant cost drivers. We mentioned that we are a people business. About seventy five, eighty percent of the budget goes into the people that serve the kids. We are estimating that our salaries are gonna go up about one point two million dollars next year, which is about two point two percent. Employee benefits include the payments that the school district makes to the employee retirement system at New York State. The teacher's retirement system of New York State, as well as health insurance costs, which are scheduled to go up about five point nine percent. You will see later on that in the area of employee benefits, the health insurance. Specifically, the prescription drug portion of the health insurance plan is going by, up by a lot next year. Based on utilization of the plan and the current situation where we are able to appropriate some reserves within the health insurance plan. But the prescription costs are going up pretty significantly. Uh, B O S E's costs, we have, we are a large, uh, district. We have a lot of students. On average, sixty students over a five year average attend our B O S E's programs. We get good opportunities for those kids to participate in C T E programs, as well as STEM High School and Tech Valley High School. We also have administrative services, including professional development, technology support and other services. That boat budget is going down, uh, next year. And we're, we're very glad that U S Star has worked with the school districts to have a good budget in terms of our B O S E services. Debt service includes principal and interest payments on monies that the school district has borrowed to do previous capital projects. That debt service is only going up by a little, remaining about the same. Interfund transfers include funds that we can transfer from one fund to another to cover, uh, areas of payment within the budget. So again, our expenditures are projected at one twelve point four. I can tell you that Mrs. Mulligan, since she's been here, has been looking with a very careful eye at our budget expenditures. She's done an enormous amount of work to align some of our budget codes, which you will see, uh, in the next couple of weeks. I can tell you that these estimates on our budget are more spot on than perhaps you have received in the past because of the work that Mrs. Mulligan and our team has done. In the past, we have progen- we have projected a much larger gap than what we're looking at right now. This one point nine million dollar gap is a more realistic picture of what we're looking at right now. In terms of the room within the budget to absorb the expenditures that we're looking at for next year. The amount of, um, conservancy, conservancy within the budget has been reduced in part because the district. Made decisions to, uh, add some programs that are benefiting the kids. And we've also done it over a period of time in which we have kept our tax levy pretty flat. So the overall increases are not out of line, in my view, to what other districts experience. And in fact, a two point two percent increase in salaries, I think is very, very good. And, um, these are the expenditure areas that generally drive the, uh, difference between the budget and the revenues that we receive. We're also entering into a period whereby in September of this year, all of our federal grant monies that were given to the school districts. To deal with, uh, academic support and responding to the pandemic will no longer be available. So we have made some decisions to, over the last couple of years, to make sure that we aren't relying on those federal revenues. To be able to keep programs and services going afloat. For example, our board had conversations about the early intervention specialists. I can say that within the budget for next year, all those early intervention specialist positions are going to be reduced. Okay, with the two individual people that are remaining in the general fund budget are able to take classroom positions that are available because of retirement. So our scores, our academic gains suggest that we have responded to the pandemic. Our kids and our teachers have done great. Our growth and academic progress has been shared by Mr. Styles with the board. We believe that we can continue to have a strong academic intervention program without those ten early intervention specialists that we once added. We moved it down to three this year and now we will be moving, we moved one into the general fund for this current year. And the last two would be moving into the, um, to the classroom positions. We had three retirements in the elementary area. Uh, I mentioned the projected increases in the prescription plan and health insurance, about fourteen percent. It's a two point three million dollar cost escalation for next year. Special education placements. Our district, uh, Special Education Committee. Strives to provide special education programs and services to our kids under the least restrictive options that are available. So we try to keep all of our kids home if we can and programs that are provided by our district. However, in some cases, the needs of the students, um, are unique. Uh, those needs need to be met in what's called an out of district placement. Not talking about B O S E's placements necessarily. I'm talking about other types of placements, such as residential placements, as well as specialized programs. The cost of those programs has gone up. The number of students that need those kinds of services to be successful. And have the support has gone up within all districts, I would believe, but in our district in particular. Additionally, we have increases in some of our service contracts for maintenance and facilities. And we also have, um, increased costs involving transportation, including our obligation to provide students who are homeless. Transportation to our district so that their educational services are not disrupted as they deal with some, uh, level of, uh, transition in their lives. So that's the budget picture as we stand right now. There was some good news that has occurred over the last couple of days. Mr. Temple, Jesse Temple, our board member, Dan Wagner, our vice president of our Teachers Association. And several other individuals from the district, including three additionally impressive students, uh, came with me to the New York State Legislature. On Friday with Jen Mulligan, as well as, um, Dan Garib and one of our parents, uh, from, uh, Goth Middle School. Uh, Kim Turner, to talk with our legislators about the budget. They offered us some encouragement that some of the issues around aid will be addressed by the legislature and increased. Uh, yesterday, we were informed that the Assembly has passed what's called their one house budget. Yesterday, we were informed that the Assembly has passed what's called their one-house budget. The Senate has passed what they call their one-house budget. Those one-house budgets become the starting point for the negotiations between the Assembly, the Senate and the governor. In New York State, generally, the final budget is decided by three people, the governor, the Speaker of the Assembly and the Senate Majority Leader. But obviously, the advocacy of the individual legislatures and their priorities matter. They have indicated that in their one-house bus budgets, both the Senate and the Assembly are restoring the foundation aid formula and doing a minimum three percent aid increase for all districts. Our foundation aid formula is over the three percent. So if we get the foundation aid formula fixed the way that it was intended to be with the averaging of the cost of living, living taken out, we should expect an increase of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars in foundation aid. So what our message is follow the formula. For years, you didn't follow the formula. If you follow the formula, East Green Bush will benefit with more than a half a million dollars of aid increase from what the governor proposed. That will help this propose the one point nine million dollar gap. I can't guarantee as a superintendent that this money is going to come. I'm a little more hopeful than I was two weeks ago by the one-house budgets being passed and reflecting some of the advocacy points that we've made. But we have to continue to look at our budget. We also have to look at expenditures. Over the last few years, because of the pandemic, our board has added positions to help students do better. And they are doing better. We also have to take a look at the positions that are where people are retiring, and we may make some decisions not to fill some of those positions to reduce the gap. We want to do that in such a way that doesn't dramatically increase class sizes. We want to maintain the level of course offerings that our kids receive at the middle school and the high school. There may be some elective courses that we take a closer look at because there might not be as many students in those courses. And sometimes we run those courses every other year. But we have to take a look at where it is that we can, in addition, count on the state aid increase, reduce our expenses going forward. And then third, we have to have conversations about use of fund balance and the tax levy. We want to be in a position. My recommendation will be that we have to do all three things that you need to do to close a budget gap. You have to ask for more state aid and advocate effectively for more state aid. You have to reduce expenditures where you can, and you have to raise taxes. Those are the three things you have to do to close a budget gap. Again, our budget gap is not as big as some other districts are facing right now. I think with, with the right level of time and work that we're doing, we'll be able to close that gap. We want to be cautious again about our reliance on fund balance. It's very easy to fill the gap with monies that are in your savings account only to find out next year that expenses go like this and your savings or your reserves are going like that as your aid is going like that. So you really have to be cautious and strategic about approaching it in a multi-year budgeting fashion, which is I know our board has always emphasized. One-shot revenues to pay recurring expenses. We have to be careful. The expenses recur every year. They grow. So taking money that we're only getting from one for one year and using it, where are we going to find the money the following year? In addition, we're going to explore sources of revenue. Mrs. Mulligan came in and presented to the board a plan to invest some of our funds, which is already yielding additional revenues. In addition, there are other sources that we can continue to look at in terms of grants as we continue to try to balance our budget and provide the excellence of education that everybody expects. So our timelines, this is where we're headed. The board adoption will occur sometime between April ninth and April twenty-third. I think we do have a meeting on the twenty-third, coincidentally. So it may be up until that meeting that we don't finalize the budget. There are discussions that the state budget may not be on time this year. Easter comes early. Typically, on Good Friday, the legislature would be going home for religious observance. April, April one will fall that week. Last year, the budget was late. And at the end of the day, the revenues for the school districts were very good. It's more important to have a good state budget than an on-time state budget. But it also creates a difficult situation for local school boards because you may hit, you may have to pass a budget without really knowing what your full revenues are going to be. So you just have to make some assumptions based on what we know at the time. So we may be in a position where we present you a couple of different scenarios for budgets to take a look at and capture your feedback. We did have scheduled a second budget review session if we needed it for next Wednesday. I don't think we really need that because we're, there's not a lot that we're going to be able to really change or do within a week's period of time, particularly as we are looking at, not knowing what's happening with state revenues. I expect at the March twenty-seventh board review that Mrs. Mulligan and I will be sharing with the board areas of expenditure that we believe that we can reduce without hurting children. We will also look at projections of our fund balance and reserves over the next few years so that the board has complete information to be able to make sound budgetary decisions. Candidates for the board, including incumbent candidates, their petitions are due April twenty-second. There will be a formal public hearing. At the formal public hearing, we talk about our student successes, our teacher, administrator and staff successes. And we tie our budget to all that we have accomplished as one of the highest performing districts in the capital region. Right? And in my opinion, the best, and in the opinion of two votes that have occurred in the Times Union over the last couple of years. So that focus will be more on how is the budget supporting the academic success and the educational excellence that we continue to expect and want to build for the future. Public hearing on the budget is May eighth, and then the budget vote is on May twenty-first. It'll be the budget proposition, and then it'll be the capital project proposition, as well as a bus purchase reserve proposition and board candidates. The capital project you'll hear about in just a few minutes. So that concludes the presentation. We're still very preliminary. There's a lot of considerations that we have to make together. I think at the end of the day, we'll close that gap and we'll have a strong program going forward to offer to the community next year. And I thank everybody for their time and attention, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Board members, any questions at this point?
No.
I want to thank the, you know, the work that's gone into this first session. I think, you know, board members who have been here many years have seen interesting presentations on their first go around. And it's been, the gap here seems manageable and reasonable given the preliminary information that we have and some of the kind of three-pronged approach you talked about, Mr. Simons, about addressing that from a revenue expenditure and then programmatic basis. So the March twenty-seventh meeting, to me, if we're not going to meet next week, will be really important to get that information because there'll be a lot more questions coming for that session, I think.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
All right. Excellent.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I'll introduce the next topic, and then you can introduce our guest, Mr. Simons. We have a capital project update. We did have, see everybody, we did have information shared with the board members in advance regarding the capital project, cost estimates. We have some of our folks from our team here today, this evening, to help go through that. Is that going to be their plan today?
Yeah, so I provided the Board of Education with the scope, itemized scope of the capital project work, which is posted on board docs as well. If any member, members of the public want to take a look at that. We've been working on a hundred and sixteen million dollar capital project proposal for many, many months. And before I introduce the guests that we have who've been helping us with this, I want to publicly thank Paul Bickel, who's our Director of Facilities, who's in the back, and Jen Mulligan, our Director of Business and Finance. I can't tell you the number of hours of time that they have spent trying to get this project right within budget, working with our architectural firm and our construction and management firm to deliver what I think will be a significant improvement to our educational program, not just our facilities, and also with zero percent impact on the tax levy. So this is a cost-neutral project in terms of the taxes. It's a hundred and sixteen million dollars. Some of the items in the preliminary estimates that were done, we had Turner take a look at. Those estimates were much higher. So we had to pull some things out of the project entirely. We had to take some items that were priority one and move them to priority two. And we had to do that in a way that preserved what the board told us were the priorities that they wanted to see in the final project. So I'll introduce our guests, and then they can help you address any questions or concerns you might have. We're not going to go line by line through it. You'll be here for a long time. I want to start with, because of the order that they're sitting in, representatives from Turner Construction are here. Kevin Henyon, did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Is an estimator for Turner. He has been working with us at every meeting, two or three a week, to give us the cost analysis. James Thomas, sitting to his right, our left, is a project manager. He will actually oversee a lot of the onsite work that's being done. And he's currently overseeing the Janay Playground work that's being done by the contractor. And he's a resident of the community and helps us with our athletic program. Pasquale Martezze is our lead architect. He likes to say the architect with La Bella Associates. And we also have Andy Rim. Did I say that correctly?
Rim.
Rimf, who is site work and landscape engineering, work mostly on the things that happen outside the building. So I'll just give a kind of a high-level review.
Good comment. So before we started, Mark Mann and I, who've been involved from beginning and from the board perspective and given that piece of it, did meet previous to this to get a walkthrough with the team here and make sure that the priorities that they have identified that had, had been shifted, what the reasons and rationale behind some of the cost estimates and what, what created this situation. Because when we first set out some time ago, it was a little bit different than where we kind of, we were ending up right now. And we did go line by line and go through these things and have a presentation and make sure that we understood it as board members to make sure that the priorities were there. And also, one of the things I wanted to mention too is that this is also a very big project in terms of community use of our facilities, which was really important in terms of our school community and our buildings to make sure that the, not as it's just for the students there, but also the families and community members who may use some of these facilities, are the youth sports, folks who wanted to walk, things like that, and just rent our facility. So all those pieces were, were critical parts of this conversation in making sure that we came into a place that, again, if we have areas where we think we could save over time, we will shift those to priority two, and I'm sure you guys will talk about that. But after this, this meeting, you know, we're going to be coming up on April pretty quick. So we have to make some decisions and make sure that this is in line with what the board felt was important, that the work that's being done now supports educational needs. Like Mr. Simon said, the facility needs to make sure that we have excellent facilities for our kids and for our families going forward into the future, far into the future. But it is a lengthy project, and with those costs, you know, we've seen the costs of things, you know, if you have a homeowner and you've seen the way things have gone up in price. And that's no different for our school district, who has to make sure that the estimates here that come in from, from Turner and others that, to get the work done. So that's my little spiel to know that we are working behind the scenes. I've been looking at this a lot, making sure I'm very close to that. And glad that the folks are here today to, to help the board answer any questions.
Okay. So I'll start with some of the priority one items that we've made sure were maintained in there. Big one of interest to some of our folks in the front row is the elementary air conditioning. The air conditioning in all of the elementary schools is a priority one and is remaining in the project. It's a key item. We've had a lot of conversations about the type of air conditioning system that will work in every building. And again, I'm confident in the cost estimate that Kevin put together for that. The playgrounds in the elementary schools, the four that still need to be replaced, Janay Playground being replaced under the two thousand seventeen project are still preserved with the same plan that was in place for the playgrounds. The library renovations to make more modern media centers in each of our schools are still within the project. We did adjust the budget for that area down to a work two kind of an item. We will, we will design to that particular budget amount. But all the library media spaces are still included. The, the site work includes significant improvements to Columbia High School and Goth Middle School in terms of not only the access roads going into the high school, the parking in the high school, but the completion of replacements of the athletic facilities, including the tennis courts at Columbia High School, which has been of a concern for some time. Upgrades to the baseball field, the softball field, the basketball, exterior basketball courts are all included within the proposal. Changes to the entrance at the Columbia High School so that it's safer. A sidewalk along the entrance road so that when the kids that walk along that road have a walk sidewalk to walk on. All of those things are preserved within the project. There was some conversations about the escalation costs that were built into the project. There are still conversations happening that may lower the budget of what we can do, for example, at the baseball field. But all those items are in the project and important. Goth Middle School, the plan was to fix the fields that are there and make them more usable, grass fields, and to put a turf field in and a six-lane track. The turf field is in the project. The six-lane track is in the project. The improvements to the grass fields over towards the transportation center is in the project. And because we're putting the turf field in the track in a place where there's a small kind of a baseball field that's used for, and for times for some of the community groups such as Serenisco, we're replacing the baseball field and putting it in the corner with a basic baseball field. So we preserved everything at the site for Goth. We are also upgrading the locker rooms at Goth to support the PE and the athletic program. We'll be doing some of the flooring work in those schools on an as-needed basis. For example, as you're pulling out some things that disrupt the asbestos-containing tile, you have to replace it. So we won't be doing all of the flooring. We're doing the flooring that becomes disruptive from the work that. We won't be doing all of the ceiling tile. One of the things we had to take out to live within the aid ceilings that are available for both in the building, we took out the unit ventilators at the high school and the unit ventilators at the middle school, which are newer and in better condition than the ones that are in the elementary schools. The elementary school unit ventilators need to be replaced as part of the air conditioning project. But we've kept the unit ventilators from the high school and the middle school on our list because we're going to try to pursue possibly some other funding sources such as an energy management performance contract, possibly some grants, but we want to keep it on our radar. That was a major cost that we had to take out to do everything that we wanted to do on the sites at Columbia High School and the sites at Goth Middle School and everything that we said we were going to do in elementary school. Lighting as needed. We, we're not going to be able to do LED lighting in all of the schools within the budget. Some of the, some of the work to prep the buildings for a generator have been adjusted. And right now, within budget, we probably can put the generator hookups on all the building. It remains an open question as to whether we can do it at Goth. Are we doing it at Goth?
Ah, yes, I believe at Goth, right.
You did include the generator at Goth, but the hookups at the other buildings.
The hookups at Goth.
Right. Hookups at Goth.
Hookups at Goth.
Okay, hookups at Goth. So sometimes the items on the list that are the most expensive are the least visible, which sometimes contributes to the cost, the electrical, the plumbing, the chemical work that needs to be done to support the systems. The roof at the high school has to be replaced. That'll be one of the first things we try to do in the phasing of the project. What am I missing, Jen?
I wanted to mention too that the, Emily, you talked about the shows and the performances. You know, this, this building itself is huge, and we want to address the, you know, I think the system's at least, you guys probably know, fifty, sixty years old, maybe older, I think, the, in the auditorium, that old equipment that's in there. 50, 60 years old, maybe older, I think the, in the auditorium, that old equipment that's in there.
We put that in as a, that's, that's a two right now.
It's a two.
Because we are upgrading the high school.
The high school, right.
Completely replacing the sound system and the lighting.
We're doing a huge upgrade in the high school, um, and hopefully you can get to the Janay part two.
The approach will be if there, if we, when we go out to bid, if the project comes in lower than the bids, our team with collaboration with the board will evaluate how we spend that difference. It's a little bit of a tricky process though, because if you're in phase one of the project and you have money left over, you don't know what might wind up happening with bids in phase two, phase three and phase four. So it may be prudent at times to make a decision early on to spend the money, extra money if you have it, because you're in that building doing work already. It may be more prudent financially to kick it down the road a little bit and wait to see how much money you have left in the, in the later phases of the project. That's what we had to do with the 2017 project. Mr. Bickle knows a lot more about this than I do. Paul, if you stand up, contribute to the.
I just wanted to mention one other, uh, boilers in all the buildings.
Right.
So, um, at six of the buildings, the boiler is like 25 plus years old. So that's another one of those things that's behind the scenes where we don't really have any more time to keep them. This is the, uh, you have to replace them and we'll be replacing them with, um, higher efficiency units, which will hopefully save energy. So things like that will, uh, also kind of kick in to, you know, round out the whole project.
I think the present, I mean, the, there's a lot of balance in other schools. We're each getting a lot of different pieces. Obviously I mentioned this, this school and its size and its age and needs a little bit more. But I think overall the balance is there for what we need.
So how much of a contingency do we have in the priority ones? Is it like a 10, 15, 20% contingency?
Uh, it ranges depending on when we think we're going to do the work. Kevin can answer that question probably best.
So in all reality, um, your contingency through the design process starts to reduce. You know, we, we, right now we have concepts of what we want to do, right? Oh, thank you.
Just what you wanted.
I was trying to carry my voice a little bit.
Um, so where was I? Um, yeah, so in terms of, uh, the design process, we have schematic or super high level concept drawings of what you all wanted to see in this project, right? And from there, we take that information, analyze it, use historical data and current market trends in order to project out, you know, if, like, like Jeff mentioned earlier, if, if we're going to do this a couple of years down the road, how much is this going to cost, right? So as we go through the design process and we get closer to an awardable and biddable project, we can start to reduce some of those design contingencies because they, they, they're actualized as scope of work that get pulled into the project. Um, the construction contingency usually hovers between five and seven and a half percent, depending on if you're doing site related things that you don't necessarily need a lot of, uh, uh, extra money in the event that there's an unforeseen condition. But when you start to get into the heavier renovation side of things, that's when you start to really find skeletons in the closet. But what we're trying to do in advance of that is go through the areas, take, uh, pre-construction photos and really work with the school district and you folks as to, you know, what you, what you would like to see done and really get out in front of those problems. And that's, I think that's another thing, another great, um, uh, task that the, or the, the team that we've been, uh, assigned with, with the school and with La Bella and everybody with Turner, um, I think we've done a great job so far.
So it looks like priority three was mostly the LED lightings and HVAC, right?
Correct.
Um, so then are those going to be, uh, research to see if we have any energy, even the LEDs, any energy?
Well, I think that's, that's kind of what, uh, Jeff was mentioning earlier is if, if we can do some research in Jennifer as well. Um, we've had discussions, there may be some monies down the line, um, outside of the capital improvement project that, you know, another funding source, let's call it, that may be used in order to upgrade some of the lighting, to make sure that we're hitting everything. But it's kind of going to be on an as needed basis as we touch the ceilings. You know, if we're going through main corridors, if we're adding an addition on the front of a building, um, you know, you don't want somebody coming in to a brand new secure vestibule and then walk into an old, like lobby area, right? So we would take down the ceilings in the corridors and with that ceiling work would be new LED lights, more efficient light fixtures, so.
And it's tough because before COVID, there was quite a bit of money out there for energy projects, but since then it's really declined.
Correct.
So you mentioned the word addition, which reminded me to talk about the classroom additions.
Yep.
Okay, we had, we had proposed originally in October when we did our presentation at Bell Top, up to 10 classroom additions. Um, we've done a review of, uh, really underutilized or unused, uh, spaces at Janay Elementary School. And with some changing around of the design of the building and some reconstruction, not additions, we can probably pick up three, maybe four classrooms without adding to the footprint of the building. When you add classrooms to the footprint of the building, they're typically aided at less than what you would renovating the existing building. Almost guaranteed that. And sometimes the state education department will make decisions that they're not going to aid additions because you have capacity in your enrollment across the district. We don't know those decisions yet. So one way we're picking up some classrooms is at Janay because of the, once was a high school. There's some areas that can be changed around and reconstructed to pick up three or four, uh, classrooms. The other buildings are subject to, uh, discussion we are planning with SED. And in terms of how many classrooms and where they would be assigned. Um, we scheduled a meeting with our architect, uh, for, I think, March 20th to meet with somebody from SED to share with them what we want to do. We'll find out what information they would be looking for in terms of, uh, supporting the classroom additions. Will, based on the advice of Rick Gancy, our fiscal advisor who spoke at Bell Top, he suggested we have to take those out of the buildings for now because they have their own maximum cost allowance. Sometimes what happens is the state education department has data on the aid available for your building called building aid units. That may not be current. And sometimes when you ask for additions, they recalculate those building aid units. And sometimes that works in a school district's favor and sometimes it doesn't. So we have to have some preliminary conversations before, before we can really decide, are we doing additions? How many will we be able to do and what buildings will they be assigned to? It's from an aid standpoint, uh, because we want to keep that local share of the project same that the local share is right now. So it has zero percent, uh, impact on the taxes. So we still have additions in the plan, just don't have sufficient information to know how those additions will affect the overall cost of the project and where those additions will go and how many there will be. But we still have it on, uh, planning consideration. In fact, we scheduled, I actually had an opportunity to interact with a few state ed people at the NISCUS conference. And they said, well, if you're thinking about doing that, you better reach out to us and have a meeting soon. So we did, we got right on that and we're having that on March 20th. So that's a to be determined.
The only ones I struggle a little bit is some of the ones that are both priority one and priority two. So if you look at like just an example of repaving the two lower student parking lots, like how do you decide what's going to be done and what's not going to be done if there will happen, you know, a million?
Paul wants it all done, but, uh, but, uh, Paul can kind of tell you a little bit about how that decision was made and what, what's in worse shape versus another, I mean.
Yes, we got to do, uh, as Mr. Simons mentioned earlier, we had to do kind of a design two in certain areas. So parking lots were one area where there's a high expense to it. So, but there's different ways to do it also. So, um, originally we had it where we would be taking it right down to nothing, building the stone right up. So right now what we did is, um, as a priority one, we've figured it as just milling it off the top and putting a new top coat on. But if we have money in the budget, we're going to take it to that next level. So the priority twos are also alternates. So we're going to actually bid them out and we're going to bid it as like a mill and top coat. But we're going to bid the alternates, um, or the priority twos as they show on your sheet there as additional. And if we can, if the bids come in favorable, we'll be able to afford to do those.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I was, I was wondering if, if it's at all possible to, to, um, get feedback from, from the administrators like in the buildings just so that we can know, you know, how they look at the use of their facilities that, you know, when we're making these decisions of priorities or what to cut, that we can, you know, decide according to, you know, people who you, who use it the most.
The administrators were involved in the initial process.
Yep.
And then I told them after we had this discussion, I'd be sending them this document and then Paul will be reaching out for any feedback. We do have a tight timeline. March 27th is the deadline that we have to approve this in the form of the proposition that will go out to the voters. But I talked to the administrators about some of this in general last week at our total. I'll be sending them this document tomorrow, uh, if they haven't already looked at it because it's been on board docs. But we tried to preserve the main things that the administrators wanted, but there may be some areas of the building that are unique that we may need to revisit a little bit between the next couple of weeks. Again, the aid ceiling is a big, a big factor. We'd like to do everything that was on our original list, but the total cost of that was over $200 million when the re-estimate was done.
Can I say something? Um, if you guys, if you could tally up the additional cameras, I see we're putting additional cameras in a bunch of the schools. We can maybe talk about that. I'm roughly, it looks to be over half a million dollars. Um, can we talk about what, why, like the priority for that and why over, you know?
I don't know the numbers specifically of cameras, but I can tell you in general, in the last project, the high school cameras were not replaced at all. And some of them are, have been dysfunctioning and needed to be replaced. So I believe more of the replacements will happen at the high school. There's some other cameras that have been requested by principals to look at different areas of the building that would be additional. Paulie, you got any additional information on the cameras? But the high school didn't get as much of an upgrade to security as the other schools got in the last project, including camera systems because their cameras were newer.
Yeah, um, yeah, the high school already had IP cameras in there. So, um, they were able to just connect to them with the new system, but they ended up reusing all the cameras. So now we're having failures over time. So, um, the idea is to now go in and replace all those cameras, add some additional interior and exteriors at the, uh, high school and also at all the other schools. Um, a lot of the elementary schools are lacking interior views of hallways and cafeterias and a lot of exterior views as well. So we want to be mindful of that and try to get as many cameras into the project as we can.
So we feel cameras make us safer or that we allow people to see what's going on or?
Well, our camera, our camera systems are used daily. And, uh, sometimes depending on the school, multiple times daily to look into incidents and allegations that may occur. Student to student, uh, disagreements, allegation that something may have happened in a hallway as students were going into the restroom. Um, to look at, you know, investigating issues where there's been, uh, a discipline matter or something. Try to get as much facts and information as we can about what actually occurred or maybe didn't occur. Additionally, we have cameras on the outside of the buildings that look at the playgrounds, the view of the playgrounds, because the playgrounds are, uh, utilized all the time, including weekends. And sometimes we have interesting night activities that occur at our playgrounds, particularly in some buildings. Won't name those buildings, but we have teenagers and other adults that hang out on our properties. And sometimes we get a call on a Sunday that it was an incident that occurred at, uh, you know. So we, we use that video footage to see what actually happened. Law enforcement in our community has access to our cameras. They can look at what's happening within a building in the event of emergency from laptop computer or from their desktop. Uh, they are tied into our system. Um, so they're used, they're used quite frequently. Uh, you know, something may happen where somebody's car gets hit by a school bus, hopefully not, uh, or another car.
Vice versa.
Uh, we have to provide information and investigate that matter before, uh, review of what actually happened, potentially, uh, a claim that may come in terms of insurance claim. So they're utilized in a lot of different ways and they're, they're really, uh, they are a safety measure, um, that the district utilizes to handle everything from student issues to community issues that come onto our property to incidents and accidents that happen. And, um, they're very helpful to all of our, our process. When we came, when I came here, we didn't have, we had good cameras, but they were building individual buildings. They weren't tied into a centralized system. In the last project, we tied it into a centralized system. I can see what, what's happening in every building from my desktop. So can some of the other central office administrators. Uh, so, uh, I mean, we don't monitor them 24/7, but we do record 24/7. So we're able to use, uh, a software program that enables us to find what happened on a particular day at a particular time, try to get the best, uh, set of facts that we can regarding what might have happened.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, um, I know so many decisions had to be made in the past few weeks to, you know, prioritize this list. So I appreciate all of the stuff that went into that. And I am glad to see some of the things we had talked about in terms of using, um, our spaces as community spaces are still priority one, particularly the fields at Goff, um, which had been so appealing to so many in the community. Um, and the library spaces as well, the ability to move that around if people want to meet at night and use that space. So, um, I appreciate that those are still priority ones.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was an excellent job. The, the one item I have to say, and I'm a former Pop Warner parent. Um, let's make sure we prioritize our students before we prioritize other, other fields.
Yeah, we wanted to do more there, but what we did, we created a budget and we're going to work with those organizations on what we can afford. Right? So for example, the Pop Warner field over here, the track is all grown over. We couldn't do a complete track replacement. We're putting a track at Goff Middle School. We have a brand new track at the high school. And so our, our plan was to clean it up basically and provide a basic pathway around there for people that wanted to walk. But we're not really doing anything with the field.
And, and we're not paying a lot. I just, you know, I see that, but then I see that field hockey, you know, can't be done. And I get the price difference is very different. I'm just saying, I, I want to make sure that our students have a little bit more of a priority.
The fields at the Columbia High School, I think that's what you're talking about. The fields that are next to the baseball field, there's an upper field and, uh, a lower field. We wanted ideally to make that lower field another turf field. The budget was cost prohibitive. So what we're going to do is address the field, the drainage and bid out as an alternate, uh, uh, turf to see where we're at with the budget. That was one of the items that, you know, the athletic department really wanted to address, but we kept it in there as an alternate in the event that we can do it. The, the other side of it is we've got the Columbia High School turf field. We've got a, have a brand new field, uh, behind Goff Middle School. I think there'll be some changes in the practice schedules and the game schedules at different levels to take advantage of those two turf fields. Right now we have girls and boys teams competing to be on the turf, as you know. Some teams get the late slot. It doesn't necessarily make students get home at a reasonable time to do their homework. It's not always pleasing to parents to have their kids coming home at eight thirty, nine o'clock at night and having two hours worth of homework to do. So the additional turf fields that we have in here, I think will help a lot. And if we can do the one that's referred to as the field hockey field, it's also used, I think, for lacrosse at times. We'll try to do that too, but we just couldn't promise it. As part of this, we don't want to promise things that we can't deliver on.
It's amazing of how much we spend in parking. Nobody like really like appreciates that. Everybody's like, who wants parking? Well, we all want parking and it's costly, um, so.
Also, we also live in upstate New York and it deteriorates quicker than a thousand other areas of the country. So we do have to spend money on it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big, it's a big necessity that needs to be done, but it's not pretty and fun, so. But thank you for all the work.
Yeah, I think, you know, you said this, the field here, I think a lot of stuff hopefully shifts to the new field, which has ample parking, ample access, maybe a lot more nicer facilities instead of parking all over the place over here and.
Well, I think what's good is we have a lot of field space throughout the.
Yeah, a lot of grounds, yeah.
And by correcting the drainage, uh, all the creatures that acquire for these. The problem with all these fields is they don't have the correct drainage.
Right.
So therefore, if you have the correct drainage and you don't have the pressure on them that they have on them now, it'll spread it out, then our secondary fields won't be viewed upon as a lower field. I mean, even the track here, that's an original cinder track.
Right.
And those tracks are the most injury free running surfaces to date. And I ran on that track when I was a kid. No, but at least if we maintain it and have the drainage, that, that's can be a space that can be utilized. It doesn't have to be an all weather space as long as it. it, if we create the scenarios for the maintenance folks to be able to use the equipment that we already have to keep these systems and up to date, at least they're usable. Right now, in its current condition, it's not usable. So, therefore, it is valueless. That's my point. That, that's why this investment in the infrastructure and drainage is so important as we move these projects forward for every one of our facilities, because water is the reason our parking lots don't work great, our fields don't work great. It's ultimately.
Or lobby rate, or stairs.
Everything comes back to, don't beat water.
And John, that goes hand in hand with the stormwater management that's in there. So, we have the stormwater management. In some cases, we're gonna try with the, uh, with the sewer system tie into the towns where it's not tied in. I believe Paul, right? Paulie wanna speak to that a little bit?
Yeah.
Stormwater management and also sanitation.
Yeah, there's a couple of schools that still have septic systems, so where possible, we're gonna try to, since, since their original time, systems have been put in place, you know, um, developments have gone in, and they brought actual public storm and, um, and, uh, sanitary sewers down there. So, we're gonna try to tie into those wherever possible. We don't know exactly what shape our, um, you know, our existing septic systems are in. So, it makes sense to make the change over at this point so we can just abandon those. We'll, we'll end up removing them, but, um, much safer opportunity is not having a backup.
One thing I wanna mention in the third, I have four questions. Now, maybe we can wrap up this portion, but I think it's important that, um, the, uh, the, the plan for the site work uh, includes reviews that involve what's called a secret type two, if I'm speaking correctly, because it is more, there is more disturbance of land in this project than there has been in prior projects. Our architectural firm, Labella, has a lot of knowledge and tools available to identify areas that would be considered by the DEC or the Army Corps of Engineers as being wetlands that require a different, uh, type of level of review. I don't know if Andy, uh, you or Usquali wanna speak in general about that a little bit?
Yeah, um, so we did, early on in development of a capital project, you take a lot of desktop cursory reviews. You look at a lot of available.
Thank you. You look at a lot of available mapping, um, and we decided, uh, to send our wetland biologists out a few weeks ago to, to take a look, uh, at specifically at Columbia, uh, Golf, and, um, and Belltop. Cause, uh, at Belltop, we're kinda just looking at pushing the edges of the site, whether it was to add parking, change the playground area, you know, whatever it was, we're looking at the edges. Um, so in that process, um, you know, we found what we, we kinda already knew, which is Columbia and Golf can be constrained. And so, it's gonna take, uh, you know, permitting process through the, the Army Corps of Engineers to, to get those projects approved. But it's really helped us. Now, we're, we're backing into the designs that we had and the visions that you've seen and vetting those for, for, uh, Mr. Simons mentioned earlier, uh, the baseball field over at Golf, you know, and trying to make a, a basic baseball field. Well, the difference between making a, a basic, good baseball field that's usable for PE, you know, and then it's kind of a modified level versus a, a traditional large baseball field, it's literally hundreds of thousands of dollars and tons of time and effort in permitting. And when you think about the priorities, you know, and getting projects done. So, we're evaluating those processes as, as we're moving forward for each, each campus. And, um, and a lot of your schools are, are devoid of that and okay, you know, but there are a couple that are gonna be impacted. We can work with those agencies and we will. Um, but it's really, uh, really an important thing to, to not lose sight of, um, because the district is, is not land poor, but not land rich either, you know? So, we're trying to make sure at each campus, you know, that we, we appropriately allocate the space for the programming we can do.
One thing I wanna mention too, um, Mark and I also talked, and I know the district and the team looked at the Columbia High School baseball field and the amount of money that's being spent there, and we asked them to take a look at that because, you know, based on that usage and, and the pieces that were being asked for and the real redesign and rebuilding of that field, it's pretty expensive. So, we asked them to take another look at that and see what we can do to kinda bring that down and reallocate some of those, those funds.
We had a meeting yesterday, had that conversation, and we're still kinda looking at it and trying to figure out, you know, how we can, how we can still do what's necessary, bring the cost down.
Yep. Alright. Any other questions?
I just wanna say, I, you know, I appreciate it, and I think you really listened to the, to the parents, especially like on the fields and the middle school particularly. So, that's, that's good. It's, you know, fully supported, and I, and I think that people were very happy about.
I met with the, uh, All Sports Club last night with Ryan Jones and went over the project. And they couldn't have been more happy and supportive of the project. There were about eight or 10 people there. Um, there's, there's, I would encourage people to really look at the details of the project, because while we spend a lot of time, uh, talking about the athletic fields, uh, which is important, there are a lot of things within the buildings that are being done. As I said, that might be more expensive, actually, but aren't seen. Uh, and, you know, air conditioning, for example, is about the learning environment, improving the learning environment for the kids to learn and the teachers to teach as temperatures begin hotter, more humidity in the building. So, um, I would encourage people to look at this document, review it. It's a, as Mike said, it's, involves every building, uh, and it's a balance of facilities improvements, athletic area improvements, and instructional space improvements to, uh, to continue to serve the school community well, as we always have. But just in a good position moving forward if it passes.
Yep. And you know, we're fortunate too, because we are, even though we're, a lot of this we're experiencing enrollment declines, the district has actually been pretty stable, but also this makes it more, even more attractive to community, uh, people who wanna move into the, the district in, in the various towns that we serve, so.
The only thought I had is we, we might wanna summarize it a little bit differently, because it's hard to read the 23 pages. So, I don't know if you can summarize it that says, here is exactly what you said, here's parking, or here's your heating.
We're planning on theming it back to the way that we did at some point, where people could see the details if they want. But how much is being spent on per building? How much is being spent on improvement of athletic facilities, playgrounds, recreation spaces? How much is being in instructional spaces and kinda categorizing?
I think it's very important, because there's things that you just need to have.
Right.
And it is what it is, and that's a lot of money.
Part of the work they do in the pre-refereendum stuff is to work on those communication, uh, tools to help the district in terms of provide that information. Yeah, and I, that's really critical to have that high-level view with the supporting detail behind it, which we know that Turner's doing a great job on.
Yes, Questar is gonna be working with Mark Adam and several people from the district on the video for it.
Communication plan.
What's really important as we move this forward, because a lot of folks key on the cosmetics of these things. But I think the simple breakdown is, talk about what you don't see. The boilers, all, in, in a very lay-type atmosphere, this is what we're doing. This is what you're not gonna see. This is to, but, but give the reasons. Because I think what's really important to any capital project is, we're not doing this to make everything look good. We're doing it to create an environment that is, is the best possible place for our children and our staff to do what they need to do.
Yeah.
And that's what the center of these projects are. It's not about, you know, having this or that. It's just these, we have these spaces, and we're trying to create that space for opportunity. You know, it's creating that, that, that environment. And, and here's what you, you're not gonna see to create that environment.
And again, what's different this time is we're also considering the community, you know, and community use. And I, I, you, we should get credit for that in terms of, you know, we're improving Green Bush, not just for our students, our teachers, but for all of the community.
Each of the town boards said they appreciated that aspect of this project.
Good.
Can I just ask Jennifer, not to put you out of spot, Jennifer, can you just talk in general about the form of what the board will see at the next meeting? What in general that they will see in the resolution they need to pass?
Yes, so there's a couple of things that's, um, and Usquali, if, uh, jump in. Um, so, uh, bond council is in the process of, uh, creating the proposition, which will be the resolution. That resolution will refer to a list of scope, which is basically gonna be this document without the cost estimates on it, because basically, we wanna make sure that there's memorialized, refer, what is that proposition actually we're, um, gonna, going to cover. Before the adoption of that proposition, will be the seeker type one deter, action determination.
Right.
Resolution. So, they'll be, um, our, we are a, uh, firm, the, the environmental, um, attorneys are working on the seeker with, uh, Labella, um, to do that. So, the first thing would be to do the type one seeker determination. Uh, there'll be a presentation at the meeting on the 27th that's gonna have high level about what the project includes. And then there'll be the form of the proposition, um, which will be a single proposition for this, uh, project at the $116 million.
Did I misspeak and call it a seeker type two?
It's seeker type one.
It's type one though, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just wanna clear up the record. It is a type one.
Yes.
Type one is the more, uh, more involved project.
Yeah, the more screen, yeah, appreciate it. There are three, there are three type, yeah, there's, huh, it works? Okay. Sorry. Uh, so, yeah, there are three type of resolution, or, uh, one is type one. There is one unlisted, and then type two. Uh, that's the one that is no action to take. So, type one is the one, because like, we talked through the meeting, uh, the amount of work we're going to do and the disturbance, and also other agency, they may be involved. So, that's the reason we go type two. So, our, uh, our team is working with the legal to put it together. It's a, a long form, E, EAF. Um, and, uh, I'm putting together all the information. So, when the, when comes in front of the board and the 27th meeting, it's just what through the resolution. And, uh, just for a clarification, the secret will need to be adopted before, uh, the, the board calls for a special meeting for May 24th.
Okay.
One, one more thing. I just wanted to, I don't know if we glossed over it. With the type one action, you heard about the priorities one, two, three. What's really important in an environmental review is the district setting itself up for flexibility of a project. So, when, when the folks at Turner help us bid this out, and we find, oh, there's a priority two item or a priority three even, that we, we now, the board can re, reprioritize later, those will all be evaluated in the same seeker process so that you don't get stuck and you have to go back in time. So, all of those priorities, I just wanna be clear, they're all a part of the seeker review process.
Excellent. Good job. Alright. Excellent, good discussion. Thank you. More to come, and, uh, appreciate the team being here and answering any questions. If there are follow-up questions, you, you feel free to, Jeff or Jen, or whoever, we can, we can quiet.
Thanks, everybody.
Alright, thank you. I wanna move to, um, our regular business, programs for his and children with disabilities. Questions or comments on that? Need a motion to approve? Jennifer, need a second. Emily, all those in favor? We have the new SRO rate agreement. Some changes there. Any questions or comments on that? No? Seeing none in a motion to approve that. John, I need a second. Michelle, all those in favor? We have a memorandum of agreement with CSA, just to kinda things in line in terms of wages. Um, any questions or comments on that? Seeing none in a motion to approve that. Michelle, Jen, second. All those in favor? Approved. And then we are on our school calendar. Um, any questions on the calendar? We read it last time, it's out here. No changes. Okay. And then, uh, I know recently had the announcement of the give-back day, which made a lot of people's breaks very happy. And the eclipse people. So, need a motion to approve the calendar? Anybody? Cheryl, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. And the second, the last item on regular business, which Allison had mentioned in her comments, is the, um, resolution to approve the agreement with EGTA. Need a motion to approve that? John, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Congratulations. Thank you for all your work. Appreciate it.
Say a bow.
Jeff wants to make a quick comment about the motion.
So, I wanna, uh, bounce off of Allison's opening comments that she made at public comment. Um, negotiating with, uh, any union, um, uh, is a, is a process that involves both sides, you know, working together and coming to agreement, even in areas where you may have started the process with wide areas of disagreement. Um, I wanna thank the HG Green Bush Teachers Association, uh, President Allison and Vice President Dan, as well as their whole negotiating team. Because even though the process was longer than either side would have liked, um, I knew and my team knew that we were negotiating across the table from exceptional teacher, with exceptional teachers. And we knew we would get to the point where we would come to a fair agreement because of the quality of the people that we were working with on your team. Um, so, thank you, uh, for that. Uh, I think the agreement is, uh, excellent in terms of what it will bring for our teachers, but I also think it is excellent in terms of what it brings, not only short-term for our district, but long-term for our district in some areas that we really needed to take a look at in terms of, uh, some of the teacher shortages and the hiring issues that we're faced with, uh, as well as long-term costs. You see the budget, and, uh, the union teachers agreed to help us with some of our increase in costs regarding health insurance. That's not always an easy thing to do, uh, but you did it for the students, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate the excellence that you bring to the classrooms every day, but also the excellence that you showed and the professionalism you showed in the negotiation process. Your privilege to work with.
You're here. You're here. Thanks, Jeff. Very nicely said. Alright, uh, table motions. We don't have any. Old business board members? Consent agenda items A through L. Any questions or comments there? I need a motion approved by consent. Jesse, need a second. Emily, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on, addendums? No addendums? New business? Nothing? Or anything? Public forum number two. Anybody left? Alright, board forum number two. Emily? Good. Jesse? Jennifer? John? And Michelle? And Cheryl? I just had one thing. I know that I did wanna say the board, I did review the RFP that Mr. Stiles sent to me. Everything was good, and it went out last Friday or Monday? Which day? Soon. It went out.
Yes.
Thursday, I'm sorry. Went out last Thursday. We, uh, any comments or questions come in and about the CBOs?
No, just a couple of little questions.
Little questions, okay. Fingers crossed we get some good responses and.
What's the deadline?
Uh, the deadline is the 20, 28th.
Two Fridays.
Two Fridays, two, it's a Thursday.
Thursday.
Cause, uh, Good Friday is the 29th.
Yes.
Gotcha.
And our signup period is closed, is it?
Sign-up period is closed.
And how many do we have?
179.
With those CBOs in there, it gets us closer, right?
Yeah.
Good, good. Okay. Thank you. Just wanna make that one comment. And then, um, we do have need for an executive session for person of negotiation contractual issues. So, we don't have any board business after that. So, need a motion to move into executive session. Jesse, I need a second. Emily, all those in favor? Have a great night, everybody. Thank you for coming and for sticking around, and congratulations.